I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, tonight led by Adam Nolly and Alyssa Seymour, two 4th grade students from Hoover Elementary.
(inaudible)
If you'll stay right there, Councilman Londo will be right down to talk to you.
Nice job, too.
Everyone say hello to Adam in the hall. Welcome to West...
Hi, Adam.
Welcome to Westland City Hall. Adam is a nine-year-old 4th grade student at Hoover Elementary. His teacher is Mrs. Diaminko. He lives with his mom and dad and two brothers and sister. His favorite subject in school is math. At home, he likes to play football and basketball. Do you have a favorite of the two sports?
Football.
What's your favorite football team?
Probably the Lions.
Sorry to hear that. All right, big question. Do you like Michigan or Michigan State football?
Michigan.
My man. You are allowed to stay. I'm just kidding. He also likes to play video games. Do you have any favorite video games?
Probably every kid's favorite video game is Fortnite or like NBA.
You want to show us the Fortnite dance?
Exactly.
You can't do them? All right. You also like to watch movies and draw and having friends come over, too. Well, Adam, we appreciate you coming out tonight and on behalf of the mayor's administration and the city council, we have a certificate for you. And then his family's here. He's got a bunch of family members that don't want to say anything, but they want to come up and take a picture. So how about one more round of applause for Adam?
(applause)
Councilwoman Green.
President.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Adams.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Godbout.
Present.
Acquor Ms. President.
Begin with announcements and presentations. Mary?
Good evening. Councilman Godbout, the entire council, to the mayor, to all the dignitaries and the fine citizens of Westland, I bring you greetings from the office of Wayne County Commissioner, Glenn Anderson, and I want you to know that there are no more coffee hours for this year. However, the coffee hours will be looked at for next year and you will be advised at the particular date and time. We're hoping to keep them as they were in the past, but please look forward to whatever the date and time will be for the new year in terms of the coffee hours. Also, I just want to remind each and every one of you of the Light Fest that's going on. It's just absolutely beautiful. It goes for a long period of time. You can just enjoy, 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 take busloads, take carloads, and just enjoy the Light Fest that's at Heinz Park. You enter off of Merriman between Ann Arbor Road and Warren Road, okay? And then also, it's currently going on, and it goes through the 31st of December. Now, if you try to go there on Christmas, you can't do that, okay? Because it will be closed. The county employees get to have Christmas off on that day. So don't go there on Christmas Day. You can go any day between 7:00 and 10:00, and that's during the weekdays, on Saturday and Sunday. It's 6:00 until 10:00. So I don't have much for you today. I won't hold up your time, but I want to say happy holidays and we're looking for a good year next year, and thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Vic?
Greetings, Council President, Council, Mayor, and everybody here. Vic Barra, President of the Wayne Ford Civic League. Before we make our presentations, I wanted to take a moment to introduce you to the team that helps to make all we do happen year over year. With me today are members of my executive board. Come on up. And because I want to live to see retirement, first I'll introduce our treasurer, Lori Barra, my lovely wife. Secondly, my vice president, Melissa June. She's been here before. I have one of my, well, one sergeant-at-arms, Dan Frye. Karen McDonough is our recording secretary, and Orville Besnut has been with me since the very beginning when I took over the Civic League as one of our trustees. I actually wrote this down. You guys know I usually wing it, but that ain't happening today. Melissa coordinates all of our bingo operations, which is a very challenging and important position. Between my wife managing the kitchen and Melissa running our bingo operations, that frees me on to take on the world at large. And as you know, I try to stay busy. Those who know the history of the league remember that when the board took control of the league in 2004, it was on the verge of collapse with nearly 3/4 of $1 million in debt, and its revenue stream was suspended by the Bingo Commission. I am proud to say that this year, we finally reached our goal to be virtually debt-free with a current accounts payable balance of zero. We also have a few nickels to spend, and that's why we're here today. Today, we wish to honor and support our incredible first responders as they spread holiday cheer in our community as they do every year, and we have four checks to present totaling $5,000. Because these guys and gals regularly battle for bragging rights, we felt that each group should receive the same amount of $1,250 each in an effort to keep the peace. So chiefs, if I could get you to come on down here and accept these checks, that'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time, Council.
Thanks, Ray. Thank you. You got a picture?
Thank you very much.
(inaudible).
Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Sorry, Mary, did you?
Yeah, I just had a few words for the Wayne Ford Civic League. I see there most of them are shuffling out of here. So if you don't mind, I was going to save it, but before they're getting ready to leave.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, Vic, and to your team from the Wayne Ford Civic League, we do appreciate all you do, and I appreciate what you did here tonight for both the police and fire, for the organizations that they give back to the local community with. But actually, my office, we kind of found out that you were going to do this tonight, so we did a little math in my office, and we actually have the Wayne Ford Civic League down for about $20,000 worth of donations throughout this year. So I mean, it's anything from what you saw here tonight, but I know that you stepped up to the plate just last week and raised $2,500 to help the Westland Meteors go down to Canton and play in the regional Super Bowl, so we appreciate that. And just looking back, Blues Brews and BBQ was just another thing you helped out with, but No Child Without a Christmas, the Halloween celebration, the wheelchair lifts that you've been doing to veterans, Thanksgiving dinners. I appreciate those extra 30 tickets you gave the Westland Police Department that they handed out to unsuspecting motorists throughout the Thanksgiving season. But at the end of the day, not just the money, a lot of times, it's just the donation of labor or manpower, and you help us out quite a bit with the bulk pickup program. You know, it was you and your labor and the force that you put together to actually go to the seniors' houses that weren't able to bring their stuff to the drop-off center, and lots of little things all throughout the year, so it adds up and makes a difference, and we're blessed to have you, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Londo?
Thank you, President Godbout. I just want to echo a lot what the mayor just said, and I wanted to throw in one that Vic Barra and many others were a part of this past weekend. The WIA, the Westland Meteors, traveled down to Canton, Ohio, their 14U team, which is basically their varsity team, to play in the, got to find it on my notes here, the World Youth Regional Championship. It costs a lot of money to go down and play in that. There was a fee to get in for the team, which is about $1,000, travel expenses, hotel accommodations, and also food. Vic Barra and Wayne Ford Civic League stepped up and donated, I believe, $1,500 towards that. Mayor's office stepped up, and a few other donors as well, Paul Ruthenberg from Midwestern Sanitation and Wayne Metro Community Action Agency. So I want to thank you again, Vic, for everything you do for our community, and again, the Westland Meteors wanted me to publicly thank you as well.
We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Mrs. McKinney?
Item C on the consent calendar. I think this is the same properties that were mentioned before when Hank Johnson was here, I think. And if they're, yeah, if they're tearing them down, what are they going to replace? Are they going to replace things there? And if it's in the historic Norwayne, it should stay with the type of housing they have there. So I'd like to know what properties. That's it.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hart. There was a question on item C. Joanne?
Yes, thank you through the Council President. The five properties in question, three of them are in Norwayne. These single-story quadplex on Manistee, single-family house on Bay Court, and a single-family house on Mason Court. Where the houses are located, those lots are not buildable, so they will be offered for purchase to the adjoining owners or held as open as green space. And the property on Manistee, hopefully, the city is holding that for future redevelopment. And then there are two houses outside of Norwayne. One is on Hugh, the other is on Warren, and those properties will be offered for sale.
Thanks. Any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held November 19, 2018. Minutes of the study session held November 19, 2018. Approval of bid for demolition of five condemned properties. Administration recommended the low bidder, Universal Consolidated Enterprise, in the amount of, not to exceed, $28,545. Approval of professional services agreement with Procedio regarding network infrastructure services with the contract to be on an as-needed basis with a rate of $155 per hour. Adoption of first-quarter budget amendment for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. This item had been introduced November 19, 2018. Introduction of ordinance 29W2624 in ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Sections 461, 49, C2 of the Westland City Code to amend the rates for industrial waste control charges. Approval of extension of winter tax payments until Thursday, February 28, 2019. Last item approved on the consent calendar, approval of the schedule of regular meetings of the Westland City Council for the 2019 calendar year. Moving to new business, item one. Approval of site plan for proposed building addition, 3521 Ford Road, south side of Ford, east of Wayne Road, Planning Department number 2221. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hart. Greg?
Thank you, Council President. For new business number one, we have a application for site plan approval at 35211 Ford Road. It's a proposed building addition. The site is on the south side of Ford Road, east of Wayne, and right at the corner with Hamilton. It's a .38-acre site. It's got 169 feet of frontage on Ford Road. The site's zoned CB1, which is low-intensity commercial business. There are currently, oops, wrong way, two sort of connected commercial buildings on the site that total 2,038 square feet. The site, you can see a Butts Residential to the south, the Thrifty Florists to the west, hardware store on the other side of Hamilton to the east, and then the auto dealership is across the street. The auto dealership is zoned CB4. The sites to the west and east are also in the CB1 district. This is a view of the site looking west toward the site. This is a view of the site looking east toward the site. That's the auto dealership across the street. It's the hardware store on the other side of Hamilton. That's a view of Thrifty Florist, which is to the west. And that is the residential structure that is to the south of the site. In the new master plan, the site is designated for neighborhood commercial office, which is consistent with the way it is currently zoned as CB1. The site plan that's been submitted, you can zoom in on it, proposes in addition to connect the two commercial buildings that are there right now, as well as the creation of a parking lot. It's basically an unimproved parking area right now. Would be a, well, going back to the site plan here, you can see that they are doing quite a nice job, or propose to do quite a nice job, of cleaning up the streetscape, putting in an ornamental wall along both Hamilton and Ford Road. There's some substantial landscaping associated with that, putting a bike rack out there and a couple of ornamental trees as well. There's a vinyl screen fence proposed along the residential property to screen it from the activity on the site. The vinyl fence was chosen because there's apparently a utility easement back there, and so it was deemed appropriate to use vinyl on top of that as opposed to any form of masonry. The site needed three variances, which were approved by the zoning board of appeals at their meeting last month. The location adjacent to, on the street side adjacent to Hamilton, is closer than it should be. It's eight feet as opposed to 15 feet required. You can see that it's maintaining the line of the existing building, though, as it exists right now. The site has only 12 parking spaces as opposed to 23 that would be required by the ordinance, and there are two spaces that are within the 15-foot setback required from Ford Road, which are these two right here. Though, as I say, those variances were all granted by the zoning board of appeals. Going on to the architecture, the applicant proposes a brick-and-block building with stucco above, which is represented in the drawing there. The planning commission recommended approval, as noted on your agenda, contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and contingent upon the variances, which have in fact been granted, and administration also recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks. Is the petitioner present?
Thank you.
Good evening. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nope. Appreciate Greg and his support. Appreciate the support of the council.
Thanks. Is there any question? Councilman Londo?
Thanks, President Godbout. First of all, thank you for bringing this project forward. The building looks great compared to the current situation. Do you have tenants in mind for the use? Yeah, just generally speaking, the hope is to attract maybe like a physical therapy type of office. The space lends itself well, the visibility on Ford Road. We've done a little bit of research that could certainly be supported by the community in that area. Appreciate that. And then what's the timeline if approved tonight that you could get started on this? Put you on the spot? A little bit behind schedule. I wish the winter wasn't knocking on our door. I'm afraid in terms of putting down foundation and starting the effort, we'll likely have to wait till the spring. Okay, we appreciate it. I'll be in support of it. I'm really happy to see that you're proposing the DDA street scrape along Ford Road. I think it's going to be a great fit to our Ford Road quarter. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Oh, Councilman Hersberg.
Just a quick question. How many tenants do you plan on having in the building? Is it two or one?
We're setting up so that it could support two, but ideally, we get one right tenant, and that would probably be the...
Absolutely.
...the best from my perspective as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate the counsel.
New business, item two. Confirmation of reappointment of Dennis Wees to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term with the term to expire December 1, 2021.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Dennis, if you'd like to stand and be recognized.
New business, item three. Confirmation of reappointment of Mel Toxton to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term with the term to expire December 13, 2021.
Councilman, support?
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Dennis, if you'd like to stand and be recognized.
New business, item three. Confirmation of reappointment of Mel Toxton to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term with the term to expire December 13, 2021.
Councilman, support?
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Dennis, if you'd like to stand and be recognized.
New business, item three. Confirmation of reappointment of Mel Toxton to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term with the term to expire December 13, 2021.
Councilman, support?
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mel?
New business, item four. Approval of voucher.
Councilman?
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mel?
New business, item four. Approval of voucher.
Councilman?
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mel?
New business, item four. Approval of voucher.
Councilman?
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mel?
New business, item four. Approval of voucher.
Councilman?
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Dennis, if you'd like to stand and be recognized.
New business, item three. Confirmation of reappointment of Mel Toxton to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term with the term to expire December 1, 2021.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Dennis, if you'd like to be standing and be recognized.
New business, item three. Confirmation of reappointment of Mel Toxton to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term with the term to expire December 1, 2021.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Dennis, if you'd like to stand and be recognized.
New business, item three. Confirmation of reappointment of Mel Toxton to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term with the term to expire December 13, 2021.
Councilman, support?
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mel?
New business, item four. Approval of voucher.
Councilman?
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mel?
New business, item four. Approval of voucher.
Councilman?
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mel?
New business, item four. Approval of voucher.
Councilman?
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Mrs. McKinney?
Reading Facebook this last week, there was a lot of complaints about Jefferson Barnes and what it is, and I think you need to explain to the public. It's open to everybody. It's not just Norwayne. It is not the community center, and it's not a temporary building. I think people need to know that. They're not, if we're going to stay as one city, we need to be one city. And the other thing I have is, what is the rule on signs? I am so sick of seeing Wayne Westland Schools signs, and they're everywhere, and the election's been almost a month away. That's it.
What on my left? Ray?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I do agree with Judy. Jefferson Barnes, to me, I thought it was a community where people, you know, all people go, not just Norwayne. That's the way I understood it, too. People pay taxes and stuff, so people should be going there. Anyway, let's talk about Target and the partnership with the Westland Police Department. And I know Mike was there, too, and that was a very good turn, and I was very impressed. I really enjoyed it. 19 carts of toys for kids, for the good fellows. I think the Westland Police Department did a real good job, and the citizens who helped in on that. I thought it was very, very good. And I'm also planning on the Christmas party December 5th here. I'm looking for the tree lighting. I'm looking forward to it. So other than that, I got a phone call from Lansing, from Paul, from the Youth Group Assistance Program. I've been nominated for an award for living a life today out there and doing a lot of things in the city of Westland and everywhere I go. And speaking of the Youth Group Assistance Program, so I'm really looking forward to that recognition dinner. Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Yes, Sever.
Good afternoon. First, I would like to wish happy holiday to all my Jewish friends who is celebrating Hanukkah. And also, I would like to send a shout-out to the 28th precinct and to all the precinct delegates who worked hard to make us number one at the polls. Thank you voters. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, for being supportive of us, and hopefully, we'll get a little attention to all of our residents, and if we can do it in the 28th, we can do it all over the city. Thank you.
What on my left?
not just Norway, it is not the community center, and it's not a temporary building. I think people need to know that. They're not, if we're gonna stay as one city, we need to be one city. And the other thing I have is, what is the rule on signs? I am so sick of seeing Wayne Westland Schools signs, and they're everywhere, and the election's been almost a month away. That's it.
What on my left? Ray?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I do agree with Judy. Jefferson Barnes, to me, I thought it was a community where people, you know, all people go, not just Norway, that's the way I understood it too. People pay taxes and stuff, so people should be going there. Anyway, let's talk about Target and the partnership with the Westland Police Department. And I know Mike was there too, and that was a very good turnout, I was very impressed, I really enjoyed it. Nineteen carts of toys for kids, for the Goodfellas. I think the Westland Police Department did a real good job, and the citizens who helped in on that. I thought it was very, very good. And I'm also planning on the Christmas party December 5th here. I'm looking for the tree lighting, I'm looking forward to it. So, other than that, I got a phone call from Lansing, from Paul, from the Youth Group Assistance Program. I've been nominated for an award for living a life today out there, and doing a lot of things in the city of Westland and everywhere I go. Speaking of the Youth Group Assistance Program, so I'm really looking forward to that recognition dinner. Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Yes, Sever.
First, I would like to wish happy holiday to all my Jewish friends who is celebrating Hanukkah. And also, I would like to send a shout-out to the 28th precinct, and to all the precinct delegates who worked hard to make us number one at the polls. Thank you voters, thank you Mr. LeBlanc for being supportive of us, and hopefully, we'll get a little attention to all of our residents, and if we can do it in the 28th, we can do it all over the city. Thank you.
What on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things real quick that were on the agenda, council. Thank you for moving forward with the reappointment of Mr. Weiss and Mr. Toxton to the Westland Board of Review for the next three years. We do appreciate their continued support and their continued service, is what I should say. And thank you for willing to continue, and thank you, council, for reappointing them, because I don't know what we'd do without these two guys, so thank you, and we look forward to your continued service. Also, council, tonight on new business, item number one, was the approval of the redevelopment of the small lot, which is across the street from the Buick dealership. You're probably gonna see a lot more of these as we continue to reimagine Ford Road. This has really been a difficult site throughout the years to kind of redevelop because of, it's just a small site. I think what you saw here tonight was, really falls in line with what we're trying to do on Ford Road. In the past, what we typically would get for that site was a used car lot, or even when Red Holman was here, they just couldn't understand why we wouldn't let them have a discount used car lot right across the street. So I think at the end of the day, this is more in line of what we want, and our ZBA is kind of teed up in our planning commission. There's always, you know, as we start to do these, it's gonna be a little bit difficult just because of the shape and size of these lots, they're very narrow, but at the end of the day, I think that's gonna be a nice addition to the Ford Road corridor. Just a couple other quick items is, first of all, thank you, everybody that participated in our town hall, State of the City last week, and I know it was a little, it ran a little unalongside, about two and a half hours. We kind of timed it out in practice at about an hour and a half, so I'm not quite sure what happened to that extra hour, but at the end of the day, it was just really a lot of good information, and we've had some turnover in our department heads, and we've got a lot of talent here that I wanted the folks at home to see, the talented people that are working for us, and also some of our new folks, and just kind of give you a flavor for some of the things that they're working on. So overall, I think it was a very well-received event, the department heads did a great job. Greg, nice job tonight. It's hard presenting to city council in a new city, and I wasn't at the last meeting to kind of wish you well, but tonight I thought your presentation on the Ford Road project was spot-on, so nice work on that. Just one other thing is remind everybody that Wednesday night is the annual Deck the City Hall, or the Deck the City Hall event here at Westland City Hall. And when you came in tonight, the audience, you could see where we really got everything decorated and looking good. We're gonna kick off at 5:30 in front of City Hall out front. We're gonna have, you know, our annual, you know, event, plus we're gonna be welcoming Mr. and Mrs. Claus into town, and we'll have a nice event here from 5:30 to 7:30. Children will have a chance to visit with Mr. and Mrs. Claus. As part of our Westland's Compassionate City Initiative, anyone who brings a $5, anyone who brings a $5 per kid or a $10 per family monetary donation for Shop With a Hero, or an unwrapped toy for the Westland Goodfellows Toy Drive, will get a fast pass to see Santa, will be able to skip the good portion of the line. So, that was a nice fun way last year that we were able to raise some money for those two organizations. And then there was one other thing, is we're going to be having our annual shopping spree at Westland Shopping Center. It's coming up, it's on December 15th. This year, the city of Westland has partnered with J-Towers and the Morning Crew from WNIC to give a lucky shopper a $5,000 shopping spree to Westland Shopping Center. Last year, we had sign-ups on Facebook. This year, you actually have to be on-site. The event's gonna start at 10 o'clock, it runs until 12, and there'll be different events happening all through that time, but you definitely want to be there for a chance to win. This year, we're actually gonna have a runners-up, which will receive $1,000, it's been to J.C. Penney's. So, there's gonna be lots of fun stuff happening at the mall on December 15th, as we encourage people to continue to shop and dine in the city of Westland. Thank you.
Next, sir. Anything from the city attorney's office?
Nothing from city attorney's office. Council president.
Begin council comments with Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, council president. I would like to start tonight by thanking Adam for leading the Pledge of Allegiance for us. I would also like to remind the community that on Saturday, December 15th, here at City Hall, I will be hosting my very first Westland Community Health Summit. It is totally free to the community, and also in addition to free health screenings, it will offer a free lunch to anybody who attends. It, just to give you an idea of some of the people who have confirmed thus far, coincidentally, Saturday, December 15th, is the very last day to register for the Affordable Care Act, known to some as Obamacare. So, there will be a company, Access will be here to register people for the Affordable Care Act who do not have access to a computer, or who just have not registered yet. Carm, excuse me, Carmano's Cancer Institute will be here. J.C. Penney's Optico, excuse me, will offer free vision screening. Oak Street Health will offer free blood pressure screening. St. Mary Mercy Livonia Hospital will offer free balance assessments. That's a screening that is specific to senior citizens, and it will be administered by physical therapists. Wayne County Mental Health Authority will be present. Hygera Health will offer resources on addiction, depression, and anxiety. The Disability Network will also be present to offer free resources for the disabled. Our Westland Fire Department will be teaching CPR. It is uncertified, but it is free education. The Westland Youth Assistance Program will also offer youth and family resources. Beaumont Hospital will offer two screenings free of charge, the child and adolescent healthcare, and also nutrition education. Premier Urgent Care, which is a local Westland urgent care facility, will be offering free vital examinations. Grillier's Transportation will offer alternative transportation resources, they will be present. And also, our Wayne County Treasurer, Eric Sabree, and his team will be present to offer resources or answer questions for anyone who has questions or issues with tax payment, or who may be dealing with foreclosures. Also, I've invited pretty much every elected official who has Westland in their jurisdiction, so I just wanted to let everyone know who the elected officials who have confirmed, we just had an elected, so there may be some, an election, so there may be some who you have not had the opportunity to meet yet. So, again, our Wayne County Treasurer, Eric Sabree, will be here. Our new Congresswoman, Rashida Tlaib, will be present. State Representative Kevin Coleman, who used to be on city council, he will be here as well. Judge Mark McConnell, our local Westland judge, will be present. Senator Erica Geis, who's our new senator, will be present. Commissioner Al Haddas will also be present, and tentatively confirmed is our new Michigan State, excuse me, Attorney General Dana Nesso is tentatively confirmed, as well as our Wayne County Clerk Kathy Garrett is also tentatively confirmed. So we'll have a full house, and again, everything is free. It is free to the residents of Westland, but if you have any family or friends who might want to partake, please invite them as well. You do not have to live in the city of Westland to partake in these resources. Also, wanted to congratulate the Westland Meteors Varsity Team and the Westland Comets on winning the Super Bowl, and thank you, Vic, and your team for everything that you did to help them with the trip there and back. I'd want to congratulate the Westland Arsenal Soccer League for a successful season, and they had a really nice awards banquet this weekend that I had the opportunity to participate in, and even did a little bit of dancing with the kids, and from what I saw, that video clip is now on Facebook, so we had a really good time there, and wanted to congratulate them and the parents for all that they do for the kids in the city. Wanted to let everyone know, if you're not aware, there is a bake sale going on tomorrow, December 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. at the Daily Senior Center on Marquette, and that's tomorrow from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I'd like to, again, congratulate Dennis and Mel on your research, or approval to the commission. Thank you so much for all that you have done for the city and all that you will continue to do. And finally, I just wanted to give a extra special thanks to the Westland Fire Department for, you know, making the commitment and sparing a couple of people from your team to come and teach CPR to the residents of our city, free of charge. CPR education used to be one of those things that were always free, but now a lot of places charge for that sort of thing, and it's very important, and I appreciate the sacrifice that you've made. I was speaking to a girlfriend of mine over the weekend, and she shared with me that her, which is kind of an odd story, her dog died this weekend, and she did CPR on her dog, and bought the dog back to life, and I thought about, you know, the fact that if that had been me, my dog would have died, because I don't know CPR. So, you know, the fact that you can not only save humans, you know, by knowing that education, you know, she was able to save her pet. So, you know, I just appreciate the fact that that'll be one of the resources that is offered to the public, so thank you for making that sacrifice. Thank you.
Councilman Hammons.
Thank you, council president. I want to start off by thanking Vic Barr and his team. Thanks, Vic, for all you guys do. It seems like every time we turn around, you're doing something else. I don't know where you get all your energy, but the community appreciates it, and we're just thankful to have you and keep up all that you do. Thanks again. I also want to congratulate Dennis and Mel on your reappointments. Thank you for your service, and best luck to you in the new year. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Councilman Hart.
Thank you. Good evening. Pretty much same thing everyone else has said. Vic, the city of Westland can't even begin to say how grateful we are for everything that you and the Civic League continue to do, from veterans to children, to victories sung and victories unsung. A lot of us know everything that you do, and you're not the kind of person that beats your chest, and I know it, but we know it up here, the amazing things you do, and I just want everybody else at home to know, the amazing things Vic Barr and the Wayne Ford Civic League does for this community are beyond measure, and I'll never be able to tell you thank you enough. So thank you for everything you do, Vic. Secondly, again, Dennis and Mel, congratulations on your confirmation for your reappointment. You guys do a definitely important job, and as the mayor said, I don't know what we would do without you, so the thanks are all mine. Thank you again for stepping up and volunteering your time, and I think it was a really easy decision, as we saw up here, to definitely let you guys continue the wonderful work that you do. Thank you. And with that, I'll be done.
Councilman Johnson.
Nothing to say, thanks.
Councilman Londo.
Thanks, President Gobert. I'll use his time. Start off tonight, also congratulating Mr. Weiss and Mr. Toxton on your reappointments. You both do an incredible job for us, and I'm looking forward to working with you for another three-year term. And also want to echo the mayor's comments and thank his administration for all their hard work from the State of the City address last, or almost said last night, this past week. We really do have an incredibly talented, diverse staff that works hard daily for our residents, and it's really a chance for the residents to see that. Public speaking's not for everyone, and some of them made it look easy, and some of them may have struggled a bit, but they, I thought they all handled themselves really well, and again, our residents should be really proud of them for what they do on a daily basis. To Mrs. McKinney, you're 100% right, that community center is for the entire community. A lot of people think it's just for Norway. It's 100% open to the public year-round. They're at 100% occupancy at that facility. I'm glad you brought that up, because December 6th is the holiday tree lighting ceremony over there at Jefferson Barnes. So, great opportunity for people to come out, if they don't know about what goes on there, come on out, or give Joanne a call anytime, and Joanne would love to speak about it. They do some incredible things over there. And as for the political signs, we, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I could check into that, or have the city attorney check into that, but I know that's something that the council talked about in a study session before, about amending that ordinance to, you know, make it to where you can't put them out as early as they put them out, and have a deadline on when they take them down, so. Let's see, what else we got here? And then I want to make a correction at the last council meeting, I was so excited talking about everything that the Westland Meteors and the Comets did. I said that both the Westland Meteors Junior Varsity and the Comets Junior Varsity won the Super Bowl. Well, that's impossible. The Comets won the Junior Varsity title, and the freshman Westland Meteors won their title. So, two of our four teams that played won Super Bowls, and again, like I mentioned earlier, Vic, thank you for all you do. Again, that could not have happened without you and the mayor's office, and Paul Ruthenberg, and Wayne Metropolitan Actions Agency stepping up to send them down there. And they're gonna need more help, because with them winning the World Youth Regional Championship, they got invited back next week in Canton, Ohio, to play on the Pro Football Hall of Fame field for the World Youth Championship. So, I talked to Coach Tay, the unit director, who's actually stepping down, and he said, "Mike, I don't know what else we can do. We've brought back almost every trophy," he said after that one. "I think we're just gonna drop the mic, because that's it." So, I'm gonna try to travel down and see them as well, but I would invite the community, if you want to help out with that, you can reach the Westland Meteors on Facebook, or you can reach out to the WIAA, either at thewiaa.com, or you can check them out on Facebook, and they're gonna need some help getting down there, because again, the registration fee alone is about $1,000, plus the lodging, food, and travel expenses that go into that as well. Want to talk a little about the wayfinding signs, there's been a lot of talk on Facebook about that, and I appreciate everyone discussing it and giving us some feedback. There have been a few mistakes, and I've talked with the mayor's office and a few of the city directors, and they're gonna be correcting those. With any large-scale project, you could have, you could possibly have an issue or two, so it's an easy fix, we can change the signs, where the arrows are pointing to. We're gonna have a coffee hour next month. Speaking of coffee hours, we're moving it to, we're going to the Holiday Park Co-op. It's gonna be Saturday, July, almost said July, January 19th at noon, so I appreciate the board for allowing us to have that coffee hour there. And then a few other things, I want to thank the Westland Police Department and the Traffic Bureau. At their last council meeting, I had a gentleman, we had a gentleman step up talking about the speed limit between, on Farmington Road, between Ann Arbor Trail and Joy Road, stating that he wanted it to be up to 40 miles an hour, now the school's closed. The Traffic Bureau went out and did a very detailed study, and they sent us that study, and it's the recommendation of the police department to keep it at 25 miles an hour. With that study, they did meet with a lot of the residents on Farmington Road, and that was, that was their suggestion, was to keep it at 25. Stuff a SWAT truck event was a great success. I know Councilman Gobert and Councilman Hart were also out there as well, so I gotta give them a shout-out. They actually beat me out there, but it was great. Thanks, Ray, for coming out, it was a great event. Like he said, we had 19 carts full of toys, and over $327 donated to the Westland Goodfellows for No Child Without a Christmas program, so just want to give a big shout-out to everybody that came out for that. This weekend, they had the packing event at the Friendship Center. Vic Barr was out there, and before he cut his sleeves off his shirt, he was out there with his Westland Goodfellows shirt. Took my niece and nephew and brought them out to show them the importance of giving back to those less fortunate, so we were able to shop, basically go table-to-table and pack bags for the kids. And then yesterday, I was out there as well to help pass out some of these gifts to the families. And then, want to echo the mayor's comments on Shop and Dine Westland. I was at the mall over the weekend, and it was absolutely packed, so I'd like to see that year-round, but we'd love to see you come out, Shop and Dine Westland, make sure to come out on the 15th for the $5,000 giveaway, and the incentives for the other giveaways as well. And then lastly, I just want to send my condolences to the family of Barb Markham, who lost her mother. Thanks.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick notes here. First of all, congratulate Mr. Weiss and Mr. Toxton on your reappointments. It's amazing, as the city is as big as Westland, how many people we have not applying for these positions, so when you are getting reappointed time after time, it really says a lot, so thanks for your service. The old Kirby Building on Ford Road getting redeveloped, that's pretty exciting. It's one of several buildings, I'd say, within the last couple of months that are getting redeveloped. It's gonna have the new DDA streetscape, and it's gonna be a real improvement in the neighborhood. Like I said, there's been several buildings like that. I wish I had a picture of what some of the Westland buildings looked like five or 10 years ago, because it's just a huge difference today, and coming into next year, we're gonna see a big difference when you're driving around town, not only with the wayfinding signs, but just the number of empty buildings that are here now and going away, so I'd say things are looking pretty good in that regard. Just a quick plug, this Wednesday, December 5th, at 5:30, Deck the City Hall event, it's a family-friendly event. Kids love it. It's usually a huge crowd in front of City Hall, it's, gets the kids real excited when Santa comes out, so if you can make it to that, it'll be a good time. And to all the members of the Civic League, thanks for all you do, and not only for your support for the veterans earlier this month, last month, but as well as the football team. Maybe in 10 or 15 years, the Lions will hire them and maybe win a game or two. We won't get our hopes up. Thanks.
I'd like to start this evening by thanking Adam for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. The Community Foundation is still collecting toys for the Salvation Army through this Friday, December 7th. There are drop boxes here at City Hall, at Fantastic Sam's on Wayne Road, Westland Lock and Key, and at the Community Foundation office on Executive Drive. Last meeting, I spoke about some actions that were gonna be taken up during the lame duck session in Lansing, that... lame duck session in Lansing that would potentially have negative impact on the local communities. And sure enough, the legislature has passed, and it's been sent to the governor's desk for the small cell legislation, which basically limits the city's ability from a right-of-way perspective to putting up poles and equipment in the right-of-way for the new 5G, or what the, the small cell is basically the 5G network now that will be taking place. The legislation basically allows up to a 25-square-foot device to be put within the right-of-way. The poles can be set in the right-of-way, the city's limited on any action that we can take, so as the build-out of these devices take place, you're going to be seeing more poles go up, they can also extend existing poles to a certain height, and put devices up on those poles as well. And all of that, there's also additional reporting requirements that the city's going to be required to do, and there's very little from, the fee structure is also now being set by the state, so our ability to recoup our costs, if they're in excess of those fees, is non-existent. So it's, it will have a potential negative impact from an aesthetics and a financial impact for the ability for the wireless carriers to build out these 5G networks. So they'll make billions of dollars in profits, and we're going to be scraping to make sure that we can cover our costs. They also are still working on the legislation for the increase in the tipping fees for the, for your, to get rid of your garbage, that has not been passed as of yet, but believe me, it will be before the end of the lame duck session. The governor's already stated that it's his number-one priority to get that passed, so once we find out what that increase will be, we'll have to figure out how we're going to cover that through our sanitation budget. An additional thing that was taken up that I didn't mention the last week is restricting the city's ability to enforce the tree ordinance. And so the state is now looking at not allowing, or in essence, it would negate most local communities' tree ordinances as they exist. So the ability for us to regulate the buffers between properties with certain landscaping, the, not allowing people to just clear-cut property, all of that would go away. So again, this is all occurring during the lame duck session up in Lansing, so if all of these things have negative impacts on the city, so it's for your information, but it also goes to make sure that when we're voting for people that go up to Lansing, that, you know, we know what their positions are on a lot of these issues, because it does impact the city's ability to continue to operate in an efficient manner. I'd also like to thank the Wayne Ford Civic League and Vic for all that they do for the community. A lot of things have been mentioned already, you can go on and on about all the great work that gets done, let alone the programs for the kids that get done through the Wayne Ford Civic League, and the list goes on and on, so again, thank you very much, Vic and the Wayne Ford Civic League. Dennis and Mel, thanks for continuing to serve on the Board of Review. I know it's a thankless job, but we appreciate you continuing to step forward and offer your time to serve on that board. As was mentioned, Barb Markham's mom passed away, and as well as we just found out that Roger Shiflett's mother-in-law passed away, so our condolences go out to both of those families. And then finally, I'd like to take a moment of silence for our 41st President of the United States, George H.W. Bush, who recently passed away. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?